Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. It is Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, 6:00 p.m., and this is our regularly scheduled city council meeting. As always, these meetings are recorded and also available to watch live or on that city channel for the recording. We'll go ahead and, if you would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'll ask the city clerk to take role.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Ed Ulliberry.
Present.
Hunter Barton.
Present.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor Protem, do we have any changes to our agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one addition to the agenda, which would be an executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice from the city attorney, which would be following the regular agenda.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, first thing on our agenda tonight is call for public comment for non-agenda items, and I'll go ahead and read this. The call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate, personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law and shall not be permitted. So, by a show of hands, is there anyone here who wishes to make public comment during this portion of the meeting for a non-agenda item? Okay, I'll start, I usually just go front to back, so Mr. Harold in the front row, why don't you come forward and, if you would state your name into the microphone, and then we need either your address, subdivision, neighborhood, something that relatively identifies if we're trying to picture where you are.
I'll make it easy, I'm from Olahtha.
That's easy.
And my name is John Harold. I came to thank the council and the staff. About a year ago, I met with Ann Morgan Thaler, I got it right once, and we talked about what could be done at the Brown Center, all of you understand what the Brown Center is, to facilitate emergency shelter and agricultural workers. And from that came a upgrade that enlarged the kitchen facilities, which made it much easier for the migrants to get to work on a timely manner. We were able to get rid of some refrigerators that had a big rock in front of the door to keep it closed, and the city did a nice job, an excellent job. And so I just came early to thank Ann, and she gave me the guy's name, Chris Ottinger, got it right, and I think he kind of led the project, and I thought, after nine months, I ought to come and thank you. And so, from Lighthouse, I'm on the board of Lighthouse, and that is the emergency shelter people, and from the migrants, I thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening.
What?
Thank you for coming and making comment this evening.
Okay.
Okay, and then I think on the second row, did I see a hand? Thank you. Again, your name and where you live, more or less.
My name is Ken Hodson, I live at Two Forty Members of Concorde, here in town. I've lived in Montrose for six years, and 20 years previously to that, I brought my family here in the summertime from Phoenix, where I was a lawyer, and now retired. I had initially intended on going into municipal government, and I went to graduate courses at LBJ School in Austin. With that in mind, I ultimately, however, became an environmental attorney, you know, these things happen. What I'm here to talk about is the baleful effects of illegal immigration on towns such as Montrose. And I like to offer as a cautionary tale, two towns that I'm familiar with. One is my hometown of Auburn, Washington, and the other is Oxnard, California. I grew up in Auburn, and I visited Oxnard for 40 years, because I had family there over that time. At the beginning of my familiarity with these two towns, they were both very much like Montrose is today, intact, law-abiding, very appealing. In fact, that's one reason I'm here, because I was driving through Montrose a long time ago and deciding, you know, this would be a place to live. Unfortunately, both my hometown and Oxnard have been overrun by illegal immigration, and that and other unfortunate policies have rendered them unsafe and unappealing. You would not want to live there. I had the benefit of seeing the State of the City presentation a few nights ago, and this morning I was at a DART meeting, and the optimism and energy and plans were just wonderful to see. I can tell you from personal experience that if this town, this relatively little town, ever becomes a magnet for illegal immigration, you can kiss all of that goodbye, and kiss all of it goodbye. You won't be spending the money the way you think you want to spend it, you won't be planning the projects that you think you want to plan, that will all go away. How to avoid that? Well, my coursework, early on, a city has to stay in its lane. A city is not a charity, and a city is not a church. I know of no charter provision I ever read that authorizes expending scarce city resources on illegal immigrants at the adverse effect on lawful city residents. They are your sole concern. You'd be commended on having such a wonderful town, let's hope we can keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and then I think I saw a hand right behind you, but there we go, come on up. And go ahead and please state your name and, more or less, where you live in the area.
I'm Richard Brown, been here for a while, 50-some years, out east of town, a little ways on there, and coincidentally, this is our topic as well. I don't know this gentleman, but just coincidentally, we're talking about the same thing, but our comes from a little bit different perspective. There's a lot of veterans here, you can see them on the back row, and I'll try not to talk too loud, and we've had meetings at the Vet Center, the Wounded Warrior Center, and last Thursday, there was probably three to four dozen, up there at least, and that's been a hot topic for a long time. And the reason is because we have found out, unbeknownst to us, that since last July, the federal government has been taking funds away from VA, from the veterans, and spending it on services for illegal aliens. We looked at each other in disbelief, we thought, this can't be, not, it can't be. Well, it is, so it's going on, we've had conflicting reports about whether or not it's going on locally, as in on the Western Slope, we hope not. We've been assured that it's not, but we're not quite sure about that. And so the end result is that, to a veteran, it was unanimous, everybody wanted to do something, state something. Well, I happened to be there, so I was selected as the sort of voluntary involuntary spokesman here. And so the bottom line is, we actually feel like we've been sucker punched in the gut with this by the very government we all serve. I'm gonna shorten this by, because I'll respect your time period, I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I have a lot, just to start off with, we, this whole business of illegal immigration is almost a senseless topic. Why are we even talking about illegal immigration? We should be talking about lawful immigration. There shouldn't even be such a thing as illegal immigration. Over the last three years, there's been upwards of 10 million illegal immigrants into the country. Well, you do the math and see what's gonna happen with that, right? You all know the problems Denver's having, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it's crazy, the California, or the problems California is having, it is just nuts. The impacts are tremendous, on crime, on schools, housing, medical resources, the air rebreath, water, everything, it's a tremendous impact. And there's upwards sometimes of 30,000 people a day coming across the border, bigger than the city of Montrose. Just think what it takes to house those people, to take care of them, resources, it's tremendous drain. I'm gonna skip to the point here, because I have a lot I could go over, we'll save that for later. The point is, we would like you to put this on the agenda to pass a resolution, many towns have done it, Monument's done it, Colorado Springs done it, Mesa County has done it, Montrose County is going to vote on it tomorrow, and we expect every likelihood that that's going to pass, and we would like the city of Montrose to put this on the agenda, to bring it up for a vote for the council, and we'll come back with much, much more information. I've given Lisa a packet like this that has copies of all those resolutions, and also I just took it upon myself to draft a resolution for Montrose.
Thank you.
I used to do that stuff, and, but like any good attorney, they'll want to redo it, right?
Thank you very much, we appreciate you leaving that with the city clerk. Thank you very much for your comments. Any other items for public comment that are not for things on our agenda tonight? Okay, well then we're gonna get going. First thing on our agenda tonight is our consent agenda. I encourage you to stay and see how your local government works if you want us to do stuff. Okay, go ahead. Consent agenda, this is, we have two items tonight on our consent agenda. Council consideration of the minutes of the February 20th, 2024 special city council meeting, and the February 20th, 2024 regular city council meeting. And second thing on the consent agenda is council consideration of the rescheduling of the April 2nd, 2024 regular city council meeting to Monday, April 1st, 2024, at 6:00 p.m.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much, we have a motion to approve that, and second, so please go Okay, consent agenda passes unanimously, that allows us to move on to our first action item, which is ordinance 2660 on first reading. And we do two readings for all ordinances, so ordinances is a fancy way to say a law, new local law, and so tonight we'll see it for the first time as a vote, and we'll take public comment, and then we'll vote on every ordinance a second time, and we'll take public comment a second time before we vote a second time at our next meeting. So this is council consideration of an ordinance designating the E.J. Matthews Mercantile Callaway Brothers Building with an historic address of 346 East Main Street as a city of Montrose historic property pursuant to Section 11-3 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. And I welcome staff planner William Reese to present this item for us.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council, and members of the public. We're happy that the new owners of this building have submitted an application to place the property on the city's Register of Historic Places, and we brought this application to the Historic Preservation Commission on February 27th, 2024. At that meeting, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of this application to city council, that they found that the building was eligible under criteria A and C. This building is associated with the history of downtown Montrose, having been erected as an early grocery store, and the building, although altered, is representative of 19th century commercial architecture in Montrose, as reflected in the projecting cornice, segmental arched windows with stone sills, and decorative brickwork. As always, a structure needs to be at least 50 years old in order to be considered eligible for designation. We haven't found the exact dates of construction, but we know that it was built sometime between 1890 and 1893, so the building definitely meets this 50-year requirement. This is the 1893 sandborne fire insurance map. This is the earliest mention or representation of the building that we found. Earlier maps show that there was a wooden building there prior to this brick building, this red coloration indicates the brick construction. The map also shows that it's two stories and contains a grocery store. Also note, in the back, there's a separate building which is labeled as a cabinet shop and a sausage factory. You can also see the original address of 503rd Street, which was the original name of what is now Main Street. One of the original businesses in this building was called Pinkstaff's Grocery. Also at this time, the second floor was a surgeon's office originally for A. Johnson and John Q. Allen, the latter of whom would later go on to be elected the anti-saloon mayor of Montrose, as we discussed during the Coors building designation. This is the 1899 map, still listed as a grocery store here, but you can now see that there's a wood and metal workshop in the back, a little bit, so by 1900, this building contained the E.J. Matthews Mercantile, and a little bit about E.J. Matthews. E.J. is Edward James Matthews, and he was born in Canada to American parents on March 1st, 1861, and he grew up in New Fane, New York. He moved to Lake City, Colorado, where he was on the Committee of Management for the International Order of Good Templars, shown in 1884, and he was a clerk in Hinsdale County. He moved to Montrose in 1886 and started his mercantile company with Nason M. Goodwin, although Goodwin would leave the partnership in 1896. Matthews also owned a farm near Peonia and developed orchards, becoming one of the largest fruit growers in Delta County. He was also elected as one of the directors of the Delta County Fruit Union and was chairman of the Building and Transportation Committee, facilitating bringing refrigerated cars, refrigerated cars to the railroads in the area. Matthews mostly lived at Peonia, but frequently traveled to Montrose for his business. He would later take on some new business partners, including J.W. Callaway in 1897, to whom he would later sell his interest in the company by 1903. The company would later be known as the Callaway Goodwin Mercantile Company. E.J. Matthews would later be elected as the mayor of Peonia in 1908, and would eventually move to San Diego, where he died in 1930. This map is from 1908, and Third Street has now been renamed as Main Street. The map also shows that the back of the building housed a cigar factory at the time. This here is the 1912 map, and the business at this point was owned by R.O. Byham and was called the Byham and Company Grocery, and then this is the 1919 map, still showing a grocery. The building was purchased by the Krebs in 1949 and was owned by the Krebs family all the way up until 2023, when it was purchased by Alexander Main and Shoots, LLC. We have a couple historical pictures of the building, you can see the Callaway Brothers Grocery sign on the front. Notably, the storefront and much of the first floor has been remodeled, and those three windows that you see on the side there were covered up with stucco. The second floor has been preserved pretty well. Of note, on this floor is the brick construction, the grouped windows with arched transoms and stone sills, and the projecting cornice. The chimney structures along the roofline that you can see have been removed since, this picture is likely from sometime between 1903 to 1905 or so, we're not entirely sure. And this picture shows a parade down Main Street, likely from 1905, and you can see the building on the far corner there. Moving on to some modern pictures of the building, this is the Cascade Avenue side. They are undergoing some work right now, bringing those three windows on the first floor back. The second floor is pretty well preserved, it's a bit hard to see with this lighting, but particularly, particularly the decorative brickwork has been preserved, and it's quite unique to the area. You can see it a little bit better in this picture, as I said, the front facade has been remodeled on the first floor. And then just to show all sides, here's the back. You can see where the second story ends, that's the original end of the building. Sandborne maps do show a one-story addition, but not as large as the current rear extension, which was a later modification. In summary, we do find that the building meets all the eligibility and integrity criteria for designation in Montrose, is associated with the history of downtown Montrose, having been erected as an early grocery store, and the building, although altered, is representative of 19th century commercial architecture in Montrose, as reflected in the projecting cornice, segmental arched windows with stone sills, and decorative brickwork. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2660 on first reading as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, always a fascinating glimpse into the past with our historic buildings. Thank you so much for doing all that research, it's really interesting. Counsel, have any questions about this?
Okay, we, before we have a motion and vote, we would entertain public comment. Anyone from the public want to say anything about this building and its historic status?
Okay, seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2660 on the first reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you, please go ahead and vote. And don't forget, you might have to scroll down to hit the enter button. And that passes unanimously, we sure look forward to seeing that gem restored and brought back to life for our Main Street. Okay, next up is Moving Montrose Forward Surface Treatment Contract Change Order Number Two, and this is council consideration of a change order number two in the amount of, that's a really big number, $1,289,120.09 to A1 Chip Seal Moving Montrose Forward Surface Treatment Contract for Completion of 2024 Surface Treatment Scope of Work. City engineer, Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nowhere near as exciting as Will's topic, but, well, to us maybe, but. So this is the change order for the surface treatment work for '24, so the reason that it's a change order, within our Move Montrose Forward kind of street maintenance umbrella, we break out the surface treatment work, which is your chip seals, slurry seals, cape seals, things of that sort, the kind of far into the spectrum preventative maintenance, and then the street maintenance project where you're doing more intensive rebuilds and overlays of some of the streets that are a lot older and need a deeper repair, come under a separate contract, so very different kind of work. This is a change order, we bid this in 2022 with the option to extend the contract for up to three years. The reason for that is, you know, it's unit rate work, we're doing per square yard of chip seal and per square yard of slurry seal, so outside of, you know, minor changes in CPI, when initially bid, there was like an 18% spread between the two, so we've been comfortable extending this contract to get all of the surface treatment work scoped and priced early on in the process, so we then, as we go into design of the larger rebuild projects, know exactly the dollar amounts we have to work with to do that. So this is year two of three on that arena. It's to A1 Chip Seal, which has done an excellent job on all the years. The things that make slurry seals go really well is really good communication with the neighborhood, so they take about six hours to cure, and so having a contractor that takes that seriously to get the no parking signs out ahead of time, go door-to-door with the door hangers, knock on people's doors, make sure they can get in and out and don't need to while the work is taking place, they've done an excellent job in that. The materials they use are really great also, their mix design uses aggregates out of Guinnesson, and it's kind of a chemistry charge type thing on them, works really well, those materials work really well with the slurry mixes, and have proven to be really durable, so it's a great product, put down well. So the areas to receive treatment this year are highlighted on this map, this has, now that we've gotten deeper into the design and we're out for bid on the larger street maintenance project right now, we open bids on Thursday, so that'll be coming forward in the next council meetings, work session, and then regular agenda. So that's a separate piece, but now that that's all been finalized, we now have the final scope map for all of the major street maintenance for this year. So within this map, the reds and greens are the surface treatments, slurry seals or cape seals. While that's taking place, if you remember, our street maintenance operation typically goes by zone, so this year's zone is the area south of Main Street. You have a couple outliers that, you know, we couldn't get to in previous years due to budget limitations or requests from our streets department, but for the most part, most of that work is taking place in the urban core. So when we come in on the larger street maintenance contract, I'll dive deeper into all of the streets in the kind of core town that are receiving the larger treatments, but this map should be pretty well solidified for all the work that's going on under this surface treatment contract. Another interesting thing to see, or fun thing to see on this project, is the yellow are highlighted to show all the roads that have been done since the Move Mo effort started in 2018. So if you remember, we started with about $3 million that first year, we've been able to increase it each year, we're at a record 5.2-ish this year, and we're getting a lot of traction. I would say we can never take our foot off the gas, because as soon as we finish, the town will go back and start again. And there's plenty to do, and the backlog is still there, but we're getting more traction and getting more done than we've ever been able to as a city, so, you know, the department, we're really proud of that, and it's a team effort, it takes a lot of work prepping the areas from Public Works, and then, like to give a great thanks to Ryan Cushion in our department, who puts these projects together every year. The guy walks down, up and down every one of these streets to, you know, we have our zones and we have our target areas, but then it has to all be fine-tuned of exactly what gets the right treatment win, and there's quite a bit of time that goes into scoping these projects, so. With that, as far as, you know, the schedule and the work itself, the, typically they like to do it in the hotter months of the summer, it goes down easier, so a lot of times they'll usually come in June or July, when they do come in, they're out-of-town contractors, it's specialty equipment that does this work. Usually they're done within two to three weeks, so when the work is taking place, people can expect to get notices on their, you know, on their door hangers, they'll get no parking signs in the street to know that the work is coming, and there'll be phone numbers that people can contact if they have questions, but generally they've done a really good job in doing that, so we don't expect any major issues, but certainly contact us if anybody does have any problems. And then as far as overall budget, like I said, we have, you know, five, 5.2, depending on which pots you're looking at, for, in the scope of work you're looking at, for street maintenance, so this is out of that pot, so obviously plenty of budget to remain, and that remaining budget will come forth on our next contract discussions for later in March and early April. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Fantastic, thank you for the comprehensive overview of what the plan is. Any questions from counsel? Okay, we would accept public comment if anyone from the public would like to comment about streets, or our youth city council, it's a lot of street work, isn't it? Okay, seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I move to, let me read it here, award a change order in the amount of $1,289,120.09 to A1 Chip Seals Moving Montrose Forward Surface Treatment Contract for Completion of 2024 Surface Treatment Scope of Work as presented.
Thank you, we have a first and a second. Thank you, that passes unanimously. This takes us to our last action item of our short meeting tonight, and that is the Ogden Road Sidewalk Extension Construction Contract, and this is council consideration of $245,413 in expenditures for the construction of the sidewalk along Ogden Road. This includes the award of a construction contract to Haynes Excavation in the amount of $231,913, and a survey support contract to Delmont Consultants in the amount of $13,500. And I'll turn it back over to city engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. So got a map up on the screen here to help orient everybody, no changes since work session, but I'll do a quick run-through of how we got here. This is along the south side of Ogden Road, so just on the left is the Ogden Woodgate Roundabout. This is, this project is primarily triggered by the affordable housing units going in kind of northeast of the rec center. The city's support towards that was to kind of help facilitate a much-needed housing block in our, in our community, was to help with the, what would be required to support that, which is the pedestrian connection down, a safe pedestrian connection down to, you know, the rec trail along Woodgate Road and those commercial centers that are alongside there. Initially, it was hoped to actually widen Ogden in this area, so add the bike lanes, curb gutter, and the sidewalk. As we got into the design on this, it just wasn't feasible without completely redoing the road, and that's primarily from the condition of the road, the condition of the base, and the grading. By the time you extend it out, you create low pop spots that want to drain, and you'd end up with a pretty awkward road. It drove, would then, to be able to do that, you'd have to rebuild the whole thing, to rebuild the whole thing was about one and a half million, which we felt wasn't worth it. The immediate need is the sidewalk connection. So we went ahead and designed the whole road for its eventual replacement, so we knew where the sidewalk was going to sit vertically and horizontally, and then we can put in the sidewalk now. So the idea there- So the idea there is, when you do come to widen Ogden Road at a future date as part of a larger project, you won't have to take out that sidewalk. You can just work inside of that and preserve the investment for this portion. So it's an eight-foot walk, kind of built some embankment along the side of the road there, and the contractor's pretty eager to go, and they actually even started mobilizing to the site. The intent is to be done ahead of the grand opening for the apartments, and we should be well on track to do that. The, got a lot of bids on this one, relatively small product, so it takes, you know, a lot of people can bond it, and not terribly surprised. Concrete contractors are really hard to come by, so it was surprising that way, because we do have trouble getting concrete contractors. So maybe that's a sign that this might be a better year for us in that arena. Yeah, so eight different bids. Haynes Excavation was a low bidder. Have no reservations about awarding to them. They've done work. They did the Woodgate widening there in front of the rec center, kind of concurrent with while the rec center was being built, and they built the water sports park for the city. Great contractor, great quality, product should go well. And then, the other contract award to Delmont is just to stake out and do the surveying on that, to have consistency between design and construction. That being said, Haynes is using a kind of a modern stringless technology where their, all their excavation grading is all controlled by a machine, which works the surfaces, and so we won't need a lot of staking, so that, I expect that to come in well under as well. So it's a great way to save, and we actually encourage this when we do our bidding, you know, if you're going to use more modern technology that doesn't require as much stakeout, let us know the savings that it would bring to the city, and that can be considered a bid advantage. In this case, it didn't make a difference, they were low anyway, so, yeah. And then, as far as budget goes, because we were anticipating the larger project initially, where we would have a partial road widening and curb and gutter, we budgeted $400,000, so this places us well below that budget, and this, you know, some other projects are coming in over, so this kind of goes into that overall averaging-out pot towards our city capital projects. Happy to answer any questions?
Fantastic. And that was a great explanation, but I also would refer, public who are more curious about the long-term plans for Ogden Road and why we are quote-unquote "only putting in the sidewalk now" and not readjusting the whole road, that you went into even more detail at our work session about this. That wasn't just yesterday, though. That was like two weeks ago, that, that end of, the end of February's work session for that longer explanation. Any questions from counsel? We did talk about it quite extensively in our February work session. Okay, any public comment about this new stretch of sidewalk? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the $245,413 expenditures for the construction of the Ogden Road Sidewalk Extension Project as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Please go ahead and vote. We'll have a new sidewalk. Thank you very much. Next, we move on to the non-action items of our agenda, which will have a staff report, a youth city council report, and then any comments from counsel before we adjourn. So we're going to start with our staff report. We do this, we do the sales and use tax every month, and we do the budget every quarter, so I'll turn this over to our finance director, Shani Wittenberg, who is online with us tonight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Hopefully, you can see my screen okay?
We can, but I think it'd be even better if Greg could maybe work his magic and it could take up the whole screen instead of just a third of it, but whatever, it all works.
Okay. If I could fix that, I would.
No, I think, I think that's on our end, but it's not a big deal. It looks like he's already working his magic, and there we go. Thank you.
Oh, great. All right, so this is the sales use and excise tax collection report for December of 2023 compared to the same time period in 2022. General Fund Sales and Use Tax is at 3% collection for the general fund. December compared to December of 2022, retail sales is up 7.8%. Construction Use Tax down almost 80%. Use and auto use tax down 7.4%, with total collections up 4.2%, and a positive budget variance of 10.8%. Year-to-date sales and use tax compared to 2022, retail sales taxes up 7.3% or $1.7 million. Construction Use Tax is down 66.6% or $674,000. Use and auto use tax down 5.3% or $90,000. Total collections up 3.6% or just about $950,000. Positive budget variance for the year of 12.7% or approximately $3 million. Public Safety Sales and Use Tax, 0.58% is in addition to the 3% and is dedicated to the Public Safety Fund. Retail sales December compared to December of 2022 are up 7.4%. Construction Use Tax up 39.9%. Use and auto use tax down 7.4%, with total collections up 7.6% and a positive budget variance of 14.7. Year-to-date, with Public Safety Fund, retail sales taxes up 7.1% or $320,000. Construction Use Tax down 5.5% or $14,000. Use and auto use tax down 5.3% or $17,000, with total collections up 5.6% or just about $290,000. Budget variance here is also 12.8% and approximately $612,000. Montrose Recreation District, 0.3% is added to the sales tax here, bringing our total sales tax for the city of Montrose to 3.88. December collections were $279,579 or 7.6% more than December of 2022. Year-to-date, we've collected almost $2.8 million for the rec district or 5.6% more in 2022, which equates to about $150,000. Excise taxes adds 0.9% for hotel and 0.8% for restaurants. December compared to December of 2022, hotel excise tax is at 31.6%. Restaurant excise tax is up 12%. Total collections up 14.5% and a positive budget variance of almost 44%. Year-to-date, compared to year-to-date 2022, hotel excise tax is up almost 24% or $40,000. Restaurant excise tax up 8.3% or $50,000. Total collections up almost 12% or $90,000. Positive budget variance of 40.1% or just about $250,000. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that vendors gave up for marketing Montrose. And in December, we collected almost $67,000, up 6.5% from December of 2022. Year-to-date, collections are just about $659,000 or 6.6% more than we did in 2022, which equates to about $41,000. And that is all that I have in my presentation, but I would entertain any questions you all may have.
Any questions from counsel?
No, thank you very much for sharing that. It's a complete information. And then, do you want to move right into the fourth quarter budget?
Sure. So the fourth quarter budget review is in your packets, and when I was putting this together, nothing jumped out at me as being a red flag. All of the major funds have collected revenues higher than budgeted, and our expenditures are lower than what we had budgeted. So each one of those major funds is in good shape at the, at the end of the year. These are un-audited figures. We have not engaged the auditor yet. So with that, I will entertain any questions that you all may have regarding just overall financial health.
Anyone have any overall questions about the city's financial health?
Okay, I think we're good. I hope you feel better. It sounds like you've got a little tiny bug, and we appreciate you not sharing that with us tonight. Zoom is a little awkward, but it's still less awkward than you having to be here in person. So thank goodness for technology, and Greg always makes it work, even if it's a little awkward. Thank you. Okay. Then we'll move on to youth city council. We are joined by the youth city council mayor tonight, Hunter Barton, and do you have just a little update about what youth council's up to?
Yep, for sure. So our big project right now is we're partnering with Sherry Ministries, and we're doing a two-week food drive. We're actually kind of in the middle of it right now. This morning, I grabbed, Sherry Ministries provided us with five barrels that we'll be dropping off at various locations. We'll be starting this food drive on the 11th and going to the 25th. At these various locations, we'll place one of the barrels with a sign on it, and then our marketing team is also working on getting posters and flyers sent out digitally and in person. Yeah, no, it's, it's pretty brief, pretty self-explanatory. We're partnering with Sherry Ministries just for the next two weeks, and yeah. You guys have any questions about that?
Any questions? No, sounds great.
Yeah. In other news--
Actually, do you have a list of the drop-off locations?
Yes, so the drop-off locations, the confirmed ones are City Hall, the Visitor Center, and then we also have Peer Kindness and the Library. The rec and the fieldhouse are still tentative right now, and then we tried getting there for, but they said no. So, yeah, I can go through that again. City Hall, Visitor Center, Library, and Peer Kindness. For sure.
Thank you. And then, was there one more piece you wanted to update us on?
Oh, yeah, we just have a few kind of important dates. There's a legislative trip to Denver, Colorado, that we'll have the chance to participate in, and so we're real excited for that. Thank you.
Great. Do you think most of you are going to be able to go? I know it means missing a little bit of school, and that's really tough when some of you have maybe AP tests or sports or--
Um, I think most of us want to go, but like you said, it's kind of a rough time. We'll actually be talking about that. We have a meeting planned for Thursday, so I'll find out then.
Maybe in the future. Oh, no, I'm just totally brainstorming right from the dais. This is not ever a good idea, but like, maybe in January, right before school starts up again, that would be a really fun time for the youth city council to visit, because they wouldn't have, I don't know, I just, it's so cool. It's such a neat opportunity to go visit Denver, and I just know the timing must not be great, but I think that, Bill, you, you came up with the idea of adding our youth city council to the Montrose Youth Legislative Trip, and it's such a great opportunity. We just might look at ways we can make sure you all can go in the future, and it might not be such a conflict.
Yeah, that sounds super exciting.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Thanks for letting me just brainstorm from here. Sorry to throw that at you, Bill. Like, why don't we do two trips? Okay. Any, any, any questions for Hunter about youth city council? Okay. Then I will move on to, oh, you know, I didn't really ask if there were other staff reports. We did the money part, but are there any other staff reports that we need to be aware of, or announcements that our community needs to be aware of? Okay, I think, you know, I just don't want it to go unnoticed that in our consent agenda, we did switch our meeting date for city council in the beginning of April to a Monday night instead of a Tuesday night, and so I just want everyone to kind of register that, so they, no one misses our city council meeting the first week in April.
It's April 1st.
I don't know. I don't want you to be, don't, 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 I don't know. Okay. And then, so now I'll move on to city council comments. Anyone have anything?
I'd just like to commend the staff, what a fine job they did with the state of the city presentations and, and the number of folks that we had, I think was exceptional. So, thank you, guys.
Yeah, it was fantastic. We got great feedback. We got, we got really positive feedback. We got some really constructive criticism, and I know we were putting it all together so that we could look at doing the event again next year. I think that kind of almost goes without saying, and, and bring it back with maybe a few little tweaks, but overall, I think it was really well received and appreciated by our community. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to thank the city staff for the snow job they did. But they did an excellent job of removing the snow from the streams, at least from where I could tell. My house had a little over 13 inches of snow. I can tell you that I was shoveling for a couple hours. So, anyway, they did a great job. I drove around town, and I didn't have to go into Fort Worth that long. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely, and they did it under the surprise conditions that the rest of us experienced. They get their weather news the same place the rest of us do, and so they did not set their alarms for 2:00 AM to check the roads. They thought they'd wake up to some drizzle like the rest of us. But someone was on it at 4:30. I'm not sure who, what, for Public Works Utilities Worker realized that early in the morning when they let their dog out, that, oh, my goodness, we better call everybody and start working, but they did a great job. Any other counsel comments?
Okay. In that case, I would entertain, not a motion to adjourn, because we added an item, I would entertain a motion.
Jay David has some language on our motion, yeah.
Madam Mayor, excuse me. I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to CRS Section 2464024B, and the following additional details are provided for identification purposes, potential litigation.
Second.
Thank you. I don't know if we have this to electronically vote, or, well, we do. Okay, great. So go ahead and, we have a motion to go into executive session for legal advice. We have a second? And that passes unanimously. So at this point, the city council will remain, as well as our city manager and our deputy city manager and our city attorney and our assistant city attorney will stay, and I believe that is all that are really needed on this. Oh, and also Tim Cox with our Montrose PD. Everyone else, whether you are a guest or a city staff member, thank you so much for coming to our meeting tonight. We really appreciate it.